Second.
Are we on? Okay, good evening everybody. It is November 10th, 2025. It is 5:31 I think, no it's still 5:30 PM and we are ready for our public calendar hearing meeting which was noticed earlier. And we will turn this over to Ms. Harrison who will talk to us about our calendar.
Hello everybody. The first thing that we're going to start with this evening are the survey results. We put out a survey for community members, families, to answer questions about their preferences of start dates, end dates, things like that. And we do the same thing with employees. And as you'll see from this survey comparison, our parents and community are right in line with our employees as well. The first question was, for the next school year, when should it begin? And the parents and community overwhelmingly chose the latest date possible of August 24th. Same question for employees. There was a little bit more of a cut there, but the majority still said August 24th. For the parent and community feedback, Thanksgiving break, they all agree that it should be a full week. And the employees feel that way as well. Spring break, and I made sure that they understood that spring break could be used to make up snow days if needed. But all of them wanted spring break to be a full week. And so did the employees. We asked about non-traditional or reimagined days to be used in instances where the weather was too bad for buses to go and pick up students and transport them to school, but would be safe enough for employees to arrive two hours late and they would learn online. As you can see, the parent community feedback was yes, they like those. And so do our employees. And the next thing that I'm going to show you is a video that explains our school calendar
Good evening. After a recess from our calendar meeting, we are now back in regular session. Four of the board members are present. Ms. Stanton Smith is sitting in Reagan International Airport due to the government shutdown. She's apparently had an interesting few days and travel, so she's not going to be able to with us tonight. So let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also felt the note that it was November the 10th, 2025, and it is six o'clock. With that, we will move on to superintendent's opening remarks.
Yes, sir, President Pruditch. And I gave you a list there. I just want to give you an update. We presented at the needs project last Tuesday, and President Pruditch, we're member Mr. Bailey, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Mitchell, Majority Whip Delegate Gearhart showed up but did not speak, but I just wanted to let you know, we presented, we'll wait and find out. The selection is on December 15th, Monday, at the lottery building in Charleston. Also, we have Mike McCranahan's leadership large group session this Wednesday work. Also, we have administrative meeting Thursday, November 13th. The school boards of training is this Saturday, and Mrs. Smith and I will be on virtual. Mr. Pruditch will be in person, and that's at Stonewall. And then also, I put on there, the consideration for November and December, only have one meeting. Mr. Pruditch may address that at the end of the meeting.
Yes, yes.
And then also, if any, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Pruditch, anything you want to state about the school board or the school building authority meeting?
Well, the-
Welcome, I just want to share that.
The presentation went well. We gave them the reason for our needs. We believe they're substantial. We believe that they will impact probably a larger number of students than any project that they were reviewing. We gave adequate justification, and they were receptive, and they like CTE. They were facing a lot of consolidation projects, a lot of smaller projects, and so, you know, we're realistic, but we're hopeful. So we will trust and rely on the school building authorities' wisdom, and hopefully, they will fund us, if not in full, at least significant, so we can get our projects taken care of.
That's it.
All right. So there's no citizens' input this evening, so we're going to talk policy 2322.
Mrs. Mitchell, Dr. Atkins, who wants to go first?
Okay, our favorite part of any board meeting is when we have the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members, and we will begin this evening with 110% club. Our first recognition is for Greg Pruitt. He is a bus operator nominated by the Transportation Department. Greg Pruitt's dedication does not stop when the bus engine turns off. He teaches many classes every year, including Transportation A training and Bus Operator Training. Recently, he has made a big impact on Mercer County students by teaching them about school bus safety with Buster the Bus. Mr. Pruitt shows up early every day to do a thorough pre-trip inspection, ensuring the safety of every child on his route. He greets students with a smile, and he knows each one of them by name, creating a positive start and end to each student's day. When challenges arise, like bad weather, route changes, or students are having a tough morning, Greg handles it all with patience, professionalism, and compassion. He takes the time to communicate with parents and assist his coworkers. Great job, Mr. Pruitt, Greg Pruitt, Bus Operator. Our second recognition is 110% club for Sarah Jones, Bus Operator, nominated also by the Transportation Department. Sarah Jones' dedication goes beyond driving the school bus. She teaches classes regularly during the year, including Transportation A training and Bus Operator Training. Recently, she has been assisting Mr. Pruitt in teaching Mercer County students about school bus safety with Buster the Bus. Ms. Jones is early every day to perform her pre-trip inspections to ensure the safety of students of Mercer County. By greeting each student in the morning by name, she helps the students feel welcomed and helps start their day with a smile. Thank you, Mrs. Jones, Sarah Jones, Bus Operator. Our next recognition is 110% club for Melissa Meacham, Culinary Instructor, nominated by Danielle Farmer, Principal at the Mercer County Technical Education Center. Melissa Meacham consistently goes above and beyond to support her students, colleagues, and the culinary program. She devotes personal time outside of her work to prepare for events, lessons, and competitions, ensuring everything runs smoothly. Her initiative and willingness to use her own resources show her deep commitment to student success. Her positive energy and professionalism inspire others, and she eagerly takes on additional projects. Recently, she spent over 18 hours on a weekend preparing students for a culinary competition, proof of her dedication and passion. Melissa proudly represents Mercer County Technical Education Center and Mercer County Schools through her leadership and community involvement. Her students frequently cater Board of Education meetings and school events, showcasing their skills and building community pride. Melissa Meacham truly exemplifies the 110% club spirit through her service, enthusiasm, and commitment to excellence. Melissa Meacham, Culinary Instructor.
I don't know why I just don't leave that on and cut it off when I don't need it. No, I won't be back till six o'clock, seven o'clock. It doesn't end until three. It ends at three on Saturday. We're going to wait a moment till our board member gets back, so we can begin policy 2322.
Okay, after a brief recess to let the room clear out, we're going to move on to policy 2322.
Thank you, President Pruditch. Just wanted to share a few updates for elementary. We did finish up. All of our principal and supervisor goals were submitted and approved to me on or before November the first, and of course, those are aligned with the board goals, with superintendent goals, and all the way down, and we all have the same focus. We did have our federal programs monitoring on October the 27th, and that was on titles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, McKinney-Vento, and CSI. We do feel that it went very well, and we should have a report back from them by mid-November, is what they told us. Saw today that they changed in GPS to where they're in there, actually doing their responses and those types of things to the monitoring. We had a CSI visit last Wednesday, November the 5th, for our two newly identified CSI schools, and that's for the 2025 through the 2028 three-year designation. That's Mountain Valley Elementary for their special education subgroup, and Bluefield Intermediate for their multiracial subgroup, and they visited both schools that morning, met with the principal, and the school counselor looked at some data and had some conversations, and then they met with our district team that afternoon. Michelle Moore-Lefwitch is our WVD CSI coordinator, and she is someone that we have worked with before, does a really good job, and look forward to continuing to work with her. I know that she can help us do very good things. There is a follow-up conference in Morgantown on December 2nd and 3rd. It'll be for school teams. Amber Reif is our Identified CSI School Improvement Coach, so she'll receive additional training. She'll be going as well, and I may possibly go if there's an opportunity. Also, we have the additional target support schools through CSI. We call those yellow schools. It's a warning schools. We have that for Athens, Melrose, and Spanishburg for the special ed designation, and then we have Mercer for the special ed and multiracial designation. So if those schools don't make a measurable amount of improvement in the next three years, then they could be a designated CSI school in 2028. So we do plan to have a roundtable discussion this Friday morning, November the 14th, with those schools, just to discuss strategy and methods to use to have that growth for that subgroup. Plan to utilize Mrs. Ashley Smith, Principal Straley, and she was very successful in having strong growth with this subgroup during her CSI designation the past three years.
That's it. Ms. Mitchell?
Um, question, excuse me.
Yes.
I understand that all the schools was kind of identified with a special need over our issue. But what is multicultural?
Multiracial. It's students that in Weavis, their demographic designation is more than one race. So you would have white or Caucasian, you would have black or African-American, multiracial, Latino, yeah, they're different ethnicities. So that is one of the demographic subgroups that-
And what do they expect? What's the purpose behind identifying these subgroups?
Those are groups that did not make measurable progress for three consistent years, so then you target those groups, and what we found, what Mrs. Smith found, and Dr. Gross at Bluewell, both were extremely successful with their designation. Dr. Gross's was actually for the economically disadvantaged, is you still target it as a school-wide improvement effort, and that's what we want to make sure that this group of principals understands as well, and you know, you're mindful and conscious of who the students are in that subgroup, but the improvement efforts are school-wide. And so, and honestly, you know, success stories with Blue, actually just applied for an exemplary school designation. I feel like they deserve that. I don't know if they will be selected for that, but it was a process, and what a success story for a school to go from a CSI designation to applying for exemplary in three years, but very, very proud. But yeah, it's just an improvement effort. And again, we are fortunate to have Michelle Moore-Lefwitch, extremely knowledgeable and experienced from the State Department, someone that I've known and worked with for a long time, and I think all of us have. Rosemary's working with her as well with a different project, and I really think she can help us.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
And with secondary, we as well did their goals, and we all, from the secondary group, everyone is focusing on attendance and the chronic absenteeism. That was one goal that we all are going to work towards together. But we did do goals, got those done by November 1st. In secondary, we also had some of the yellow designated schools, and that was, they consisted of Bluefield Middle, Pipeview Middle, Princeton Middle, and Princeton Senior High School. Montcom High School is an ATSI, which means that they're that yellow, but they will be monitored more regularly over a three-year period and could go back to being a CSI school if they don't get their scores up. And we're looking at each of those. It's special education with the exception of Bluefield Middle, which is special ed and African-American. The rest of them are all the subgroup of special ed. One of the things that we're doing is we are meeting with the principals and attending LEA committee meetings to make sure that in their strategic plans, that's one of the things they have to do, is address their need and what they're going to do to fix it, so we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that, so we're doing some meetings with the LEA committees as well. Most of these schools, well, not most of them, all of them, they're going to use the data that we get from the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year in order to keep growing, but we've created a template, and we've created a rubric to go with it, so that everybody's looking for the same type of things and knowing how to judge it. That seemed to be one of the issues that what one person thought was important in one school may not have been so important in another, whereas we need to make sure that we're moving them all in the right direction. We're doing individual meetings with our principals. Russell is doing that with attendance as well. The schools that he's been at, we did see an improvement on our October monthly attendance, so we feel like it's working, the direction that we're going in. We are doing, the Gear Up program is using an incentive for attendance, and it's Attendance Wars, is what it's called, and they're doing a monthly attendance competition, and they get prizes, or they could get a trip at the end of the year, so the schools are really playing into that, and it's funny how competitive they've become. So we've done that for two months, and it'll go every month for the remainder of the year.
Just two grades, though, correct?
Ninth and 10th graders are the cohorts for this year.
I got you.
Middle school's done it in the past, so they're still doing it, but they're doing it on their own. It's not with the Gear Up funding. And of course, we are doing the prizes. And we have Desmos training, which is a math training for the way they're using the calculators and those things now on testing. We start Desmos training next week for each of the high schools. We have a different one every day, Monday through Thursday. On Thursday evening, there will be a meeting with Desmos for any math teacher in the county that wants to attend from four to six, just for their chance to sit down and work as a cohort together on things that's going. Oh, we're getting ready to go to a STRIVE conference. It's November 17th, and I won't steal Ms. Huddles' thunder. She's the one that organizes. She's the chair of this, but it's STRIVE, and it stands for Strengthen Behavior Response Through Targeted Assistance to Promote Regular Attendance, Increased Achievement, Validated Practices, and Empowered Support Teams. So it's just bringing everything together for special ed a little tighter, a little closer. And so she has a committee that she organized, and so we were going to go to Lewis Park for that, for that training. And that's pretty much where we are.
Questions?
Yeah, what is Desmos?
It is just, it's another program that we are using.
Name of the program.
It's the name of the program, and it is what they're using in the math classes in the high schools. Honestly, in going into some of these classrooms, we were surprised at how much the kids are using. at how much the kids are using it. They're pulling that calculator down, you have that Dropbox, and they can pull it down and use it. And that's what they use on the state assessments and those things. So we've got to teach them how to correctly use those tools. And that's what, that's what it's about. And it's geared toward math.
Anything else?
I have one thing I'd like to share with you.
Please.
I'll come back after I pass these out. I have our rooms update on usage. Actigee sends me at the end of each month what a product line looks like, and just give you a date on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
As you can see, each month, we get a little bit better. Teacher engagement, you see the activation, 674 of 868 teachers, that's 78% who have activated the rooms accounts. Now, please keep in mind that in rooms, it has all teachers, including inclusion teachers, who may not necessarily have to have their own account. They can just go into the regular teacher's account to send any kind of message that they want to send. Also, and something that I need to ask them about, it has all of us in it. It has all board members. It has everybody at the central office. Leslie, you have one. I bet you didn't know that.
No.
So that's something that I'm gonna have to talk with them about to look at those numbers. Lots of engagement as far as them posting on, it kind of looks like a social media page, announcements for the class, you know, to remind parents and students when tests are, when things are due. And then as far as private messaging, that's going very well, too. So as you can see, staff sent 8,907 messages in October, and that's up sharply from 6,730 in September. So parents and teachers are communicating with each other. This is a very easy way for them to do that. And it tells you who our leading users are. The parent and guardian engagement, up 62%. 62% have at least one guardian with an active rooms account, more than a 20-point increase since August. 78% of activated guardians exchanged messages in October, and it gives you some more details down below that. So it did start out a little bumpy. Those first few weeks, I was spending most of my days helping parents get logged in and troubleshooting and things like that. I rarely get any emails regarding that now. Every, so every couple of weeks, I still go ahead and send out an invitation, trying to capture those that haven't logged in yet. But I'd say that we've rounded a corner, and it's going well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any?
Was she bringing that up yet, Ms. Roman, or?
2322.
Yeah, Ms. Roman.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that at the Fall ASBO, they did present a new finance metrics that they're going to be rolling out this year. The points changing, so that we, whether we fall into the watch category from a financial perspective. But, and I'll do a presentation for you all later, as soon as we get the official. But one of the things that I did, I've already told Mr. Prudish and Mr. Toman, is that they actually have a criteria that if your fund balance from prior year drops more than 5%, you lose points going forward. So we already, especially this year, lose points because this is my third year as treasurer, and as a new treasurer, we lose points. So we'll automatically lose points if we drop our fund balance more than 5%.
Wait a minute. You lose points for having a new treasurer?
Yes. Federal, actually, special, special ed's the same way. We lose points if you have a new director.
That qualifies as one of the dumbest metrics I've ever heard. So if you bring someone that's been a treasurer in another school for 50 years to your school, you get dinged for it?
Well, I can't say that. I am a new treasurer in general, so I get dinged. I think if you were a treasurer in another county, that you wouldn't.
You get dinged for just a status?
Yes. 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 And again, they're trying... You did, too? So again, their, their, their argument is, you know, we need to watch more closely. And in my case at least, they give us a grant for a mentor. So they are training us while they're doing that, too. And that's been invaluable.
But unless you make mistakes, why would they ding you? They're dinging a status. It's, it's really a dumb measurement for determining whether the finance or special education department are doing their job. Oh, you're new. We're taking five points. That's just dumb. With all due respect to the State Board, whoever came up with that one, you need to go back and rethink it.
So again, I'll update you. When we get the official new metrics out, I'll update you in more detail. But I did in particular want to point that one out.
That's an example.
Actually, no. The biggest change we had is they've raised construction to 50,000 versus 25,000 before we have to do certain bidding and put it in the paper and things like that. So that was a positive for us, that they've adjusted for inflation. So that's the only real major challenge that we have.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right then, we'll move on to the business portion of our meeting. Approval of minutes of the October 23rd and October 27th, 2025 meetings. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion and a second. Questions, comments, or discussion. And on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries four in favor and none opposed. No, you're fine. Three in favor, none opposed, and one not voting. All right. Consent agenda. All right. Board memo number 189 is the placement of a student from Liberty University to complete 45 hours for one of their coursework for the Fall 2025 semester. The individual will be placed at Lashmeat-Mitoka School, and placements, as always, are contingent upon appropriate forms, receipt of acceptable background check, and the university naming site supervisor superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number 190 is the auction of surplus vocational items. McTech has identified the below-attached items, which are outdated and no longer needed. The items have been offered to other CTE centers but were not claimed. McTech would like to auction off these items to make room for new and updated equipment to better service students. I'm not gonna go through the whole list. Superintendent recommends approval of these items. Board memo number 191 is the placement of a student from Southwest Virginia Community College. They're requesting that an individual be placed to complete 20 hours for a coursework for the Fall 2025 semester. They will be placed at Timberwood Elementary, contingent upon the appropriate forms, acceptable background check, and this university naming site supervisor superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number 192 is the auction of surplus buses and vehicles. The Transportation Department has identified a list of bus vehicles that are no longer considered useful. They're obsolete and can no longer be utilized by Mercer County Schools. The superintendent recommends approve, approve to declare these items as surplus and to offer the items for sale at auction through govdeal.com. Okay. Board memo number 193 is the placement of a student from Bluefield State University for coursework in the Fall 2025 semester. They'll be placed at Bluefield Intermediate and Bluefield Middle School. Their placement is contingent upon appropriate forms, acceptable background check, and university naming site supervisor superintendent recommends approval. Board memo number 194 is RFP 344, Engineer Water Runoff, Storm Water Management and Wastewater Management. As required by West Virginia Code, this RFP was issued to select an engineering firm for these reasons. It may be necessary over the next year with an option to renew for, if necessary, for two years. We published the RFP in Telegraph and the Charleston Gazette Papers. Four engineering firms received, we received responses from four engineering firms. A committee was convened to consider the firms. Two firms were asked to present to the selection committee. Thomas &amp; Litton was of 96 of 100 points. Superintendent recommends approval of the award to Thomas &amp; Litton, Princeton, West Virginia, for future water runoff, storm management, and wastewater management engineering services as necessary over the next three years. Board memo number 195 is bid number 978, School Bus Parts. Bid 978 was issued to obtain guaranteed discount agreements with multiple vendors for school bus parts. The discounts calculated based on retail prices or established catalog pricing. The bids were advertised in two newspapers. Coal Truck Parts gives us a 57% discount on filters. Interstate Batteries a 52.3% discount on batteries. I'd say batteries on the first and filters. Batteries on the second. Matheny Motor Truck, a 25% to 35% discount on all parts. Worldwide Equipment a 5% discount on all parts. Superintendent recommends approval of the agreements with the listed vendors for the guaranteed discounts on purchases for school bus parts. Board memo number 196 is HVAC Hot Water Pump at Pikeview High School. The maintenance director pursuant to Policy D04 is requesting quotes for a new hot water pump for HVAC unit at Pikeview High School. Three vendors submitted responses. Superintendent recommends purchase of the new water pump for Pikeview High School from TruTech Mechanical in the amount of $18,000. Accessivity funds are being utilized for this purchase. Board memo number 197 is the payment of invoices for the month of November. The actual checks have been written or being held pending consideration by the school board. You have a list of those on your computer. That is the end of the consent agenda. Questions, comments, or discussion? I did. No problem. On board memo number 190, going through the list of surplus vocational items, most of them don't look like they could be utilized by any of our schools. But the HP poster printer, when I saw that, I wondered if that had been offered to other schools in the county. That might be something somebody might want. It's just one of those things, you know, you get some teacher at a building that says, oh, yeah, I'll do that. Because I'm assuming it is what it says it is. It makes posters. Okay. I don't think any schools are gonna want a Grizzly joint planer, but I thought they might want that one. All right. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda? There appearing to be none. Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Questions, comments, or further discussion. Then on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries four in favor and none opposed. The next item on the agenda is the board memo number 198, which is going to be altered a little bit. We're not adding anything. We're taking away. You should have, did everybody get the email?
Yeah.
Okay. So everyone should have received the email. And what we're doing is we're pulling out the director. It's, the current memorandum is Director of Purchasing and Payroll. Based upon the email we received today and the information, it should just be Director of Payroll, with the reasons explained therein, to get it on the floor. Is there a motion to accept the board memo as? The board memo as altered for 198? Okay. All right. There's a motion, and there's a second. Questions, discussion? There appearing to be none. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries four in favor and none opposed. Board?
Yes. That is, Michael Lauren, as you may know, Lauren left after the last board meeting. We, she was appointed that same night as the treasurer in Summers County, and that's where she was. It's a great opportunity for her and definitely great for Summers County. Lauren had extensive payroll experience. She had done payroll for 10 years, and so she really helped here and did some taxes and things like that that typically fall under payroll. I'm not an expert in payroll, so after much discussions internally, what I would like to do in the, in the past is really not replace Lauren, per se, but just to have more help. I do plan to bring to you a Director of Purchasing at the next board meeting slash professional accountant. So they will also help, but I will take over most of what Lauren did. Lauren did, you know, a great job, and it's, it's time. And I can do that as long as I give up some of the purchasing responsibility. I'll still be involved, but, you know, going out and working with FEMA and spending, you know, several days out on the field is, and meeting architects and engineers.
It never seemed to be a great fit. I mean, we appreciated your hard work, but it doesn't seem to be what a treasurer should be doing.
It's not. It's not. But I will be honest, I needed Lauren's skill set at that point in time. It was just, it just made perfect sense. I said, it's kind of a season. She was here for a season to help us with that. And now I have the other under my belt, and I'll take that over and try to turn over the purchasing and payroll at that level.
So we voted on that one. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Policy I08, Mercer County Esports. Mr. Toman?
Yes, President Prudish, you have the first reading there. And Mrs. Farmer's here if anything needs to be questioned back on that. If you guys have any questions regarding the first reading, I'd like to...
Hodges.
Any other questions?
Did we, my first question is, did we utilize some other county's policy on esports to create the, create what we have and then change it to suit our specific situation? Okay. All right. Okay. That makes sense. So it was, and that goes back to comparing them to athletics and the coaches and the way we do athletics. All right. So have there been any, having reviewed it, are there any specific questions at this point? Or, because if not, it's gonna go out for public consideration, and we'll see it back for second reading after the public's had a chance to comment.
Have they had competitions yet? Have they had been competing yet?
Yes.
Against each other or?
Several that are actually winning, I think. Our valor is probably the one that probably are eight, I think.
Number one player in the four-nine, I think, number one, uh, the number thirteen for us. I think we've got a number seventeen for us. We're.
It sounds like it.
They have their first, is it called, I'm wondering. Land, where they actually meet in person at WGB on Pacific Globe. So all the rest of them are virtual.
But these, they go and they sit in assigned areas and play as a team against other people sitting in their assigned areas. Yeah.
So, you know, these kids, they're going to be recruited, time for.
I got.
I've already got three to do. Where? Time for.
There you go.
And I know of several others.
Not to mention the fact that it's a multi-billion dollar industry now and people are making a living doing this. As amazing as that is, people are making a lot of money playing these games.
We've, we visited University of Cincinnati two years ago and they had incredible esports lab of probably 50 seats, chairs, and it was, it was very amazing.
They're working on boards. They're like University of Cincinnati, that's what we.
Cole?
They went to me today, they're doing, they, they're really involved in the hospital as well and they want to get more involved in our community. They met with us today and they're going to come over and talk to our kids, but they're going to get us involved in the streaming side. So even the students who don't play games, they'll get, what they call switch.
Doubt tactics.
Doubt tactics and switch. There are a job market for that. So even if they don't game, they can watch. They'll play the game and kind of commentate like a sports.
You have to have people behind the scenes and in front of cameras for sporting events and that's what that is. That's really crazy, isn't it?
Really out of my element, but I'm worried.
Mr. Hodges, I'll share my contact with you too. We've got a good contact through a innovation transformation consortium I've been on, so it's pretty good. University of Cincinnati is impressive.
Wasn't there a young man at the school that competed internationally?
There is a, what of our nursing institute, um, um, her nationally, just competing in the middle.
Is he from Bristol High School?
I'm not for sure. That, Bristol High School person was before my tenure and I, I never had.
Well, you know, there was a time when computers were new and we were still trying to figure out how you could have a career in that and how in the world you could possibly make money doing that. And all the richest companies in the world are directly involved somehow in computer industry or streaming or whatever, so.
And it's, it's not just McCetfield, it's hitting all the schools. So even if they don't take a class year, they can come around to school and just say, yes, I'm going to do it. But it's not just McCetfield.
Awesome. That's awesome. Okay. So it's working the way we just want it to. That's exactly right. Good. So the next item on the agenda and the last action item on the agenda is board memo number 200, which is the personnel agenda. You should receive an amended agenda. And as we pointed out to you, the only change is on page six, under resignations, the custodial position effective November 6, 2025. Superintendent recommends approval. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, or the personnel agenda? Is there, there's a motion and a second. Questions, comments, or discussion. Then on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed likewise. That motion carries four in favor and none opposed. That leaves us with some discussion items on the agenda. Mr. Toman.
And discussion items you had on there, Facilities of Spanishburg.
Right.
Any information on Spanishburg?
We need to hear from Mrs. Wellman on that.
Yes. So we did complete the initial claim from FEMA on Spanishburg. And the final piece that we were waiting was on how much the peers are going to cost to fix that section that we consider the new section. And that came in at $916,000. In addition to the fact that that doesn't include the gym floor and finishing that portion that actually did flood inside. If you remember, this just affected the structure. So FEMA asked me for an update last Thursday and Lauren was leaving, so I really haven't spent a lot of time on this, to be honest. But I printed it out. They, our representative from FEMA wanted, wants us, before they will move any further on this project, to meet with the flood plane administrator in our county, which is Keith Gano, and said that there are multiple things that we need to keep in mind and meet with him. Primarily, this is in a floodway and there are rules and regulations that the federal government has to follow before they can invest funds in this. In addition, any work that we do, we will have to get a flood plane permit from him before we can do anything on this as well. So I'll pass this out, let you read it, and then what I would like to do is ask that he meet with someone, whether it's the board or me or Mr. Atkins as facilities director, so that we understand what the, what's required and what his thoughts are. I will tell you that while we were there, FEMA said there is really nothing we can do to mitigate that. It is a floodway, not just a flood plane. And there's really, other than trying to keep water out of the school by putting some inflatable things in front of doors, that that's really about all we could do. There's just no way to divert the water away from the school in that situation.
So just again, because I like to comment on sometimes the foolishness that I hear from the government, you could, you could absolutely build 10-foot, 12-foot berms around that facility that would make it flood-proof. It would take a larger flood than the one that hit us, but they don't want to spend money on that and that's fine. They have their roles and we can live by it, but to say it can't be remediated is inaccurate.
They do it mid-way, so I would, I would.
Yeah.
Full tank.
Yeah.
Well, for 159 students, I think the cost-effective measures is what they were referring to for that size of facility and that few students. If it's a town, that's one thing, but this is a school with 159 students. So I will also add to you as well that we're having these same issues at Princeton Primary and we expect the estimate to be very similar at Princeton Primary as well. As we mentioned, that, that's going to have to have peers installed and built as well because it was not built on deep foundations. The original report that we found said they did not recommend building a two-story building. And if we did build, we needed deep foundations. And we built a two-story building on the, just the two-foot foundations. So we're going to be having to do this at Princeton Primary as well. So my, my request is that you, do you want Mr. Gano to come meet with you all?
I, I think that he should meet with, with Mr. Atkins and you and discuss the logistics of it. And then you can report back to us what his findings are. And if we need to discuss it with him, we'll get him in a board meeting and.
Okay.
That conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll get to that. Okay. Is that all you have, have for us?
Yes. That's it.
In terms of discussion of the work session agenda, which is Friday week, at this point, what I have planned is discussion of moving forward on the renovation of our policies with the new process and the new setup that we've been developing with the SESC expulsions. There's been a request that we discuss the, whatever you want to call them, wish lists from, that we received from the schools. From the LSICs and other subjects. I don't want to load too much because my guess is the policy conversation won't take very long. The expulsions is going to take a long time, I suspect.
And we need any update on, because of board meeting.
Right. Yeah. The, the plan at this point is to use that work session as our final board meeting for the month of November in lieu of that. So any business that needs to be taken care of will be taken care of in that session as well. So even though it's designed as a work session, we should probably call it a special session. That way we.
Special meeting slash work session.
Yeah. That, that works fine. If you have something in mind, get it to us this week so we can get it on the agenda. I have some other ideas, but I'm still not sure whether they need to be here or somewhere else at this point. Okay. So that takes care of that item. Last item is administrative updates.
Any other administrative updates from any of you? Thank you.
There has been a request for a executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel pursuant to West Virginia Code 6984B2. And there will be one issue to be discussed and that will be it and it'll be a personnel matter. And we will come back out of that session and we will adjourn.
Do you want exit or you want back there in that room?
Let's just let everybody go home. Except, of course, the person managing our streaming.
You'll have to step out.
So everybody can head on home. We're going to go into executive session briefly. We'll come back out and we'll be done. If y'all want to hang around while we're doing this, we'll go back there. Yeah.
You can come back at which call, make a note.
Amy, I'll get the, whatever. Amy, I'll get the, whatever.